Okay, are there any standing committee reports?
I would like to introduce the board. I'd like to introduce the board our new HR and Training Director, Karen Newton.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you, Joe. Karen, it's a pleasure to have you on our team.
Thanks, Tina.
Okay, we'll move on to resi... I'm sorry.
I just wanted to watch the latest deal on the AMR's. Ready?
What an update is on that?
We have a new contract. Both of us back in AMR's hands, is that correct?
Yes.
We're waiting for a reply.
So three months into this, we still have nothing.
Correct.
Negotiating back and forth.
Yeah. We're well on our way.
Working out a couple of details.
Has anything been done to start an alternative service, another service?
Till we sort this out.
That's what we agreed on when we passed that resolution, that we would begin searching for an alternative service.
Well, let's get this one first.
Apparently that hasn't happened.
Well, we're sorting through the contract.
Well, I understand the contract with AMR, that's fine at the end. But, the problem is we've done to staff to it for another service.
I think that's...
Three months into this, the group from Sidney and Hancock said that in three months, they could have that service up and running.
And they should measure the proposal?
No. Well, they...
That would...
Their understanding was, well, somebody from this committee would contact them. That's...
Basically, we're hoping to learn from this contract what needs to be done, and hopefully, at the end of this contract, we might not need a paid service. If all these other departments that are putting departments or emergency services personnel in place, we might not need this contract in the end. So it's kind of stockgap measure.
So should they be starting something on their own and then come to you guys?
What's your opinion on that?
Because they don't seem to be clear. They seem to think that the Alex Services Committee was going to reach out to those, Hancock and Sidney, and get it started that way.
She just sort of... But he's clear. Hancock and Sidney cannot operate in the county. On a countywide basis, they do not have authority to from Department of Health.
Unless they get their own COA.
Unless they get their own COA, correct?
Which is in the process.
Correct. As far as... That's my understanding. Yep.
But this is basically, hopefully, a stockgap measure.
Correct.
Right? As these other departments go forward, we're staffing up, correct?
Yep.
But nothing has been done. That's what I was trying to... All I was trying to... Three months have gone by, and we haven't... Nothing has been done as far as finding another service. So my question is, should they get something, their act together, and come to this committee? Should this committee contact them and tell them, "Let's get going on this"?
I would say, let's see where the contract goes first.
I mean, how many contracts we must have in place?
We might have one at one time, anyway.
But I do think we are close to getting a contract. There were only a...
Based on the last email we got.
There were only a couple of issues.
I think we're very close.
And they weren't major issues.
We got one back from AMR, and they were... I think there were some issues with reviewing it because of personnel or whatnot.
Yeah.
Illness.
Correct. I understand that's also changed from 30-day opt-out to an 90-day?
That's what's been proposed.
Well, we're proposing that. They asked for a... We are, but we're hoping for...
We propose 30 days.
They propose six months.
They wanted six months.
We propose 30 days, which was actually unreasonable. So they're met halfway.
We're hoping.
We're hoping.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I understood that we passed that resolution to bring AMR on for that contract with the thought process that the committee was going to research and develop a plan on how to cover the whole county. Is that what everybody understood? And I remember saying that, and I saw a number of supervisors shake their head. Is that still the committee's process of looking into that?
On the end result, I would say yes. But right now, we need to get this in place.
Yeah, I understand that, but I...
So we can learn from it to see how we need to navigate.
Right. Yeah, I get it. I just want to bring that back on the floor, that the long-term goal for the Public Safety Committee is to, how do we provide service to the whole county? Am I correct in saying that?
But there's still a lot to lose there.
Sure, sure.
The problem is, we don't have the data right now.
Right, no.
The hope was to bring AMR to accumulate the data, to then be able to come up with a plan. So what's holding us up with coming up with a plan is not having AMR to not get the data to be able to move forward.
Well, I think this was a two-year contract, right?
Yeah, it was a two-year plan to, like, analyze what's the real usage in the county, where are hotspots, how do we handle those, and then come up with a...
As we go through the contract, that's when we'll start looking to see.
My expectation would be that full two years to develop a plan. That's what I had in my mind. I'm not sure if it will be elsewhere.
Right, Joe.
Yeah.
You know, the problem right now is, it is in lawyers' hands.
Correct.
And if this is the case, the lawyers are the ones that are discussing the changes, this and that. I still think the committee was directed to look into an alternate program. And if that's how it was set in the resolution, applying, you know, approving it, then it ought to be looked into. Otherwise, they're not following the resolution either.
Right, but I think this is a good time to put in the thought process of, we're working on this plan, there's some bumps in the road, let's do it. But strategically, for a long-term goal, two years to develop that plan to cover the whole county.
Like to develop a plan, you need information.
It... Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Back to what Peggy said. So you need information out of the contract to help formulate the next big step, I would say.
Right. I don't think we're expecting a whole county contract six months after this contract goes into effect. But as long as the thought process is still there, that committee is working on that strategic goal, I'm happy with that.
Correct.
So this is kind of a reminder?
Yes.
That's right.
That's right. Joe, just want to remind the whole of the people to the fire.
Aye.
That's what we're doing.
How do we cover the whole county? Because that was the biggest thing. Because it isn't fair for a number of towns that have paid services now. So what is that plan? That's why we... That's why I changed my vote originally, too, so... And that's based on the committee's promise to develop that. We'll give you two years, bud.
Yeah. Maybe two months.
Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. First resolution, number 124.
I'll pull that up, then move for adoption.
2022 Budget Amendment, Summer Youth Employment Program, Department of Social Services. Questions on this resolution? If not, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Resolution number 125.
I'll pull that up.
2022 Budget Amendment, Delaware County Rental Supplemental Program, Department of Social Services.
These are all 100% reimbursable.
Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes? Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Resolution number 126.
Yep. Pull that up.
2022 Budget Amendment, Summer Youth Employment Program, Youth Bureau. Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield? Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Resolution number 127.
Can I have the resolution up for a while? Board, please, second.
2022 Budget Modification, Transfer Funds Planning Department. Any questions? Shelley's here.
This is where we have the interns doing this?
Um, yeah, so these are the grant funds we were matched many, many years ago for a contract invasion to do the housing management plans. I have three interns on staff this summer doing culvert inspections, so that would pay their salaries.
Okay, finally call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 128.
Bring this up for the board, please, second.
2022 Budget Modification, Transfer Funds, Department of Planning and Watership Affairs. Questions for Shelley?
I have one question. This is the Cask of Watership, CWT. CWT is the corporation of watership.
Okay, we'll make that correction. Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Resolution number 129.
I'd like to bring the resolution up for the board, second.
2022 Budget Modification, Transfer Funds, Watership Affairs. Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis? Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson? Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Resolution number 130.
I'll pull that up.
2022 Budget Amendment, Appropriation American Rescue Plan Funded.
I'm handing out a paper here, spreadsheet. And I just... No offense, but I just made a note for... I might have one extra for the supervisors, so...
The ones that are on the committee already have.
Yeah, you are already... It's the same thing we saw in committee.
It's what we've... I'm sorry.
Yeah, it gives you an overall view of every one that we funded and the ones we haven't funded. So, I'm sorry, Tina.
That's okay, no. Are there any questions on this resolution?
This last... We approved the funding of Helios Care over a three-year period at 15,000 a year for three years to help them do their very important programs for those that are in need. And also, we had a... From Hancock Telephone, a request to serve about 75 patrons in the Hancock area that are served by Verizon, but they have, believe it or not, D S L. And some don't have anything, and some have D S L. And this is to bring them up to standards with the Hancock Telephone broadly in the service. And so, they're the two we recently approved a while back, and a couple weeks, so... That's much before you... And this spreadsheet has them all on there.
And we're close to the end here.
Well, on the back, we're down 533,000 left.
I'd like to see if we got the soldiers monument in there, or if the restored soldiers monument out in square.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you see, in some of these programs, like the monument, we don't know if it's going to run 500,000 to restore it, or maybe more, maybe less. So this funding will fluctuate if there's unspent funds. How much, we don't know. We don't know what some of the projects will cost at this point.
And Helios Care's hospice.
Yeah.
Wayne, the next payment is going to come in pretty soon.
It's here.
It's here already. So is our...
Yeah, we got it.
Here as well.
That's what says on the back. We receive funding, federal funding received to date, 800,570. Just...
Eight million. Not eight million, not eight thousand.
Is that what I said? I'm thinking tons, though.
Okay, are there any questions on this resolution? If not, please call the...
I'd like to make comment. Thank you very much, Wayne, for giving out this information so everybody knows.
We keep it up every month.
Yep.
So thanks to Chris Gillen's Department to keep the figures where the amount paid. And of course, we're just talking about July 1st, whether we pay any since then. I'm not quite sure, but it is pretty close.
Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 131.
Bring this up.
Authorization for awards, Department of Public Works, letting of July the 19th, 2022. Any questions? So this is where awarding it to both bidders?
Yes, that is correct.
I saw one was trying to hire and the other lower, and back and forth, so...
And it's also a function of availability at the time that we need to... So we do the evaluations and the ready for the house. We try not to leave that material staying on the property for any longer than is necessary. This gives us maximum latitude.
Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield? Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Resolution number 132.
Bring this up. Second.
Change order number one, proposal number 29 of 2021, Department of Public Works. Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Resolution number 133.
Bring this up.
Authorization for disposition of personal property no longer necessary for public use, Department of Public Works. This is a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Can I ask Sue one question?
Sure.
Just curious. What's a sterling? Is that a lift?
That's a... That's a... Turkey 45, that is what the old man that roll on trucks. Parkus.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I see a solid way.
Okay, resolution number 134.
I bring 134 up and move for its adoption.
Sale of tax-required property, Treasurers' Office. Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes? Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 135.
I bring that resolution up and move for its adoption. Second.
Sale of county-owned property, Treasurers' Office.
Can I ask just one question? Traditionally, they would go for a tax sale and so forth, in this case, we did not. How will the funds be distributed? Normally, the town or village gets a certain portion of the tax sale, but...
The villages will get the share that they would be getting. Not out of this, but we will make them hold to the number that the creed upon the Treasurers' Office.
Is it common to, like, in this case, they didn't really notify the village that they were doing this? Is that customary that they were... They're not against or anything, but they come up...
Notify them.
Then they were doing the transaction. They were doing the transaction.
Uh, no, that wouldn't, that, not, once, when they're foreclosed on. It goes through the process.
Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone.
Yes.
Mullay.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Valente.
Yes.
Tuthill.
Yes.
Axtell.
Yes.
Taggart.
Yes.
Marshfield. Vernal.
Yes.
Isel. Haynes.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Hinckley.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kozier.
Yes.
Layton.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Okay, resolution number one thirty-six.
I bring this resolution up and move for its adoption.
Second.
Increase in rate per mileage reimbursement. Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
This is retroactive batch to win?
It is in July.
But this is what.
It's hoping it's January.
IRS or whatever, that's the rate.
Yeah, I just, I just.
Resolution number one thirty-seven.
I'd like to bring this resolution up to the board. Second.
Public hearing for the inclusion of agriculturally viable land into certified agricultural districts during the designated thirty-day period for annual district review. So, this public hearing will be on Wednesday, August twenty-fourth at one o'clock at our next board meeting. It's a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. So carried. Resolution number one thirty-eight.
I bring resolution number one thirty-eight to the floor and move for its adoption. And I also want, uh, Steve Bud to take a moment to explain the purpose of this resolution.
Okay, Bud, you need to bring up the local law.
Oh, I forgot about that, sorry. Bring up local law number fifteen to the floor.
Second. Somebody's taking to this?
Steve, please.
Do this, uh, I was going to do cellular.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions, I'm welcome.
For the alarm.
For the alarm, yeah. It would, the other resolution was the one we modified.
Okay, I was just wondering if you wanted to make any comments on your focus behind this or if there.
I think for the public, we need an explanation for the False Alarm Reduction Act.
Okay. So, years ago, the fire service came to my office and asked us to develop, essentially, what you have in front of you, the False Alarm Reduction Act. Speaking with the sheriff's office, the nine-one-one center receives approximately two thousand, over two thousand, um, automatic nine-one-one calls a year from alarm companies from people's houses, businesses, et cetera, that have these alarm systems installed. The overwhelming majority of these we're finding are false alarms due to lack of maintenance on the systems, um, any number of things we're finding. We're not finding that the alarms are actually functioning as they're meant to function. Um, what this, uh, local law will do, will form a registry for these alarm systems. So, we'll have these people's names, phone numbers, key holders, everything on file for them. So, we can actually contact somebody in the event the alarm goes off. It will also hold these people accountable, hopefully, for their systems, make sure they're being maintained. That way, our, our police services, you know, our fire and EMS services are not, uh, running around wasting their time essentially.
So, every time an alarm goes off, nine-one-one dispatches a police officer?
Or depending on the type of alarm it is, yes, police or fire department or both.
Now, Sheriff, I was probably one of the biggest culprits a few years ago because I got new alarm system.
Yeah.
I think you owe a donation.
I'd be gone somewhere and I'd bet the alarm company, call me first. Don't call the, no, no, we can't do that. We gotta call that right in because it won't be a, an issue. I could never convince them to call me first. And, uh, the sheriff is, I bet you, probably this many times over the several years. And, uh, but it's, it for.
But is it, is it home team the way it's meant to be? Like, so is, is it, is it going off when somebody accidentally enters the house and doesn't, doesn't, you don't key in on the keypad?
It's going off.
It's just going off by itself randomly?
And of course, the alarm company, which I switched now, one in the flesh, they would, they would call.
There's, there's very, there's, the, the alarm companies range from, you know, high-end, the best of the best. Then there's, you know, fly-by-night. That, some of them, you, you don't even really have any interaction with them. You buy the system at Walmart and install it yourself and. So, um, but, you know, and some of them are, some of the calls are false alarms, but they're false alarms because the alarm is functioning the way it's meant to function. So, you know, if somebody burns their toast in the morning, yes, that's not really a, it's not really, uh, an emergency. However, the alarm is functioning the way it's supposed to function. So, that's not going to count against the, against the homeowner.
I, I, I did all this because I was a victim of, of a robbery. So, that prompted me to, to get into this and it's really been quite a chore. You ought to go around the house. My wife has signs on the cellar door. Close the door when, if you leave the door open long enough.
That was.
And so, it's just, it's a learning curve for people that have none.
And then the number of these systems is exponentially over the years, especially with the number of second homeowners we have now in the county. Airbnbs, you know, all the airbnbs are installing automatic smoke detector systems or, or something like that. You know, so they don't have to worry about their tenants knowing the address or anything like that. They've got an alarm company to take care of.
Well, you can tell we're naming this law after the supervisor. Yeah, we're.
I was just going to say that. Wayne's world, Wayne. Well, you already brought Wayne Bang. Steve, how does, how does the alarm trip off on campus? How's that going to be affected or how is that going to take care of it?
So, that's again, that's going to take, you know, it's going, there's going to be a little bit of an investigation process there done, you know, by the fire chief or whoever, you know, the responsible party is that's responding. But a lot of those alarms act the way they're supposed to. You know, if somebody's smoking, if the alarm is acting the way it's supposed to, they may not be there, they may not be doing illegal activity, but that's not our concern. The alarm is acting the way it's supposed to function. You know, it's, it's identifying the smoke and setting the alarm off.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. So carried. So, the public hearing will be held at the next board meeting, August twenty-fourth at one oh five. Resolution number one thirty-nine.
I'll bring resolution number one thirty-nine to the floor.
So, we did make a couple.
I need a second, I need a second.
No.
Okay. There's an amendment, Steve.
There is a, a couple different places we amended this. Uh, we did not take, we did not remove anything from the original that you folks have in front of you. After your first whereas, we added a second whereas that states the emergency responders of Delaware County are seeing extraordinary increases in call volumes and current technologies are increasing their reliance on adequate, on adequate cellular service. That's the first, um, amendment. The second amendment is in the, well, if you add in the first where, the first amended whereas, it would be the fourth whereas. Um, the last sentence, um, the second sentence will be amended to read the second homeowner. When second homeowners or tourists visit Delaware County, they're often found with no way to communicate or call nine-one-one. And then the last, there was a last sentence added to that paragraph that states emergency responders also find themselves regularly in areas of no cell coverage while on emergency scenes significantly hampering their ability to communicate reflect effectively. And then in the last, whereas, we just added emergency responders to the list of, of, um, things there. So, now it reads, whereas it is imperative that the emergency responders, residents, tourists, and second homeowners of Delaware County be able to have viable phone communications within our area.
Are there any questions for Steve?
Steve? So, essentially, the lower cell provider in, they need to put up their own tower. Essentially.
Essentially, yes. I mean, there's very few cellular companies now that are building their own towers.
I think it's got to be better. Most cellular companies don't build towers anymore. It'll be an outside company that will build a tower. But they'd be available to anybody else.
There's got to be a tower built.
Yes, and I will add to that, the companies' network of towers were all designed, as we all know, to be able to handle cellular service. And we, as a committee, have talked about it several times, that they've not really, so far, had very good luck with getting carriers interested in giving out those towers. I would suggest that this also be sent to each of the cellular carriers in this area, this resolution. I think it would go a long ways to showing them the concern that we have in the area.
Could any of the ARP funding, funds that are locked over, could that be used in?
Well, we, we had a proposal here, you'll see it on your sheet. Backup fiber, the communications towers, that, but that really, it was just a couple of towers in the county that possibly could accommodate, you sell service?
No, no, every tower in the county can, can accommodate it.
I want to say it, some towers in the county.
Right, some of them, some, some of our towers are in duplicate locations essentially. So, you know, where our towers are, there's already a cell tower, you know, within a couple miles.
Right. And I should add, it doesn't have to be a tower. Mark Silo, the food doctor, he was also a part of that. It doesn't necessarily have to be a tower.
See, back when we were in the, looking to lure one in several years ago, the cell providers did not want a tower on top of a mountain. They wanted it down over the mountain.
That's right.
Near the highways and stuff. They didn't care.
It's all affecting their design, their, their network design. The idea of putting a tower directly on top of a mountain sometimes interferes with existing towers around the area. It's better to be more directed by being down farther in the valley in some cases. It's all based on the design of the, of the whole network. All the towers have to work together. That's how they cover areas that are dead. That's why Walt has got one.
They're really not interested because it's not profitable.
That's why they're not getting more service.
Their argument is there isn't enough service to justify it.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, they're not taking into account the second homeowners.
Exactly. The other side of that is they don't take into account second homeowners or transients that come through the area and all that stuff. It's only residents, it's a problem.
Well, the second homeowners are probably paying for it at their, you know, first home. They're getting the service through the first home. So, you know, they don't see the benefit of paying, you know, making available the second home.
They don't have a plan. They're complaining that's.
Well, when they look at, when they look, correct me if I'm wrong, but when they look at, like, do we put a tower in Masonville? Well, there's only two thousand people that live in Masonville, not the four thousand that live there in the summer town. So, they made the decision. What?
Same problem we have in Rockford, same thing, yeah. Somewhere we have probably fifty percent more people.
Right.
The other concern is, is that most people from downstate do not have landlines anywhere.
Right.
And the only phone service that they have anywhere, whether they're in their home or anywhere, is their cell phone.
Well, if you're going to change numbers, what you have to do is have the non-residents, put their active billing residents upstate where there's no service. And they can say, come on, I'm paying for the service, my cell phone, here's my address. But when you, the non-residents are complaining, well, you got service where your home address is. I mean, that's the only way you're going to get them back up is by putting your cell service number maybe at your non-residents. Because they'll, that will be more of an address, oh, yeah, you, you are in Roxbury, you are in Masonville.
They're all in Roxbury.
At least two of them, at least two. But that's the only way you're going to get their attention is by putting your billing address at the second home residence. So, they keep saying, oh, you're right, we don't have service there. Maybe we should look into it.
One thing outside, which, um, we're looking into in Roxbury, I think we're going to go with, is there is a company out there that's working on a database where what they do is residents or anybody that in the area can go to this, can go to a link, which we're going to be posting on our, on our town website. And they can enter their address and, and where they live or where they have no service. That will go into a ba, a database that will be used to promote cellular carriers and also help tower developers understand where towers are most needed. And they can take that information back to the carriers. Problem is cellular, cellular companies, as we all know, are huge, both over nationwide and worldwide. And their budgets are all based on what their RF engineers think is the most important area.
Most return.
And not, not necessarily the best return, but also with their FCC requirements, the best areas of coverage and things. So, there's, there's a lot of factors in it, but they need to, they need to be promoted to know that these areas have problems. And things like support, like this resolution are a huge step in the right direction.
Yeah, no, this is a good resolution.
Yeah, I, I, I was, to finish up, I, I will make that available to all the rest of you also.
Okay, any other questions? A voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.